Evening. Good evening and welcome to the Village of Amerenita Board of Trustees Budget Work Session. Tonight, we will be talking about the the Planning Department, the the Building Department. But before we do that, we are going to go into Executive Session to discuss five oh one one oh five one D of the Public Officers Law to discuss the employment history of people or persons in the in the Building Department. So I need a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we're gonna, we're gonna head out into the Executive Session Room, and we will be back anon. Anons. You might be the only one who got that.
I, I feel my, I feel my neural type. Three words. Well, that's why I told Nora about last Monday.
Alright, so you see, it could be all tomorrow. So just so you know, since you asked, make your rest of the house. Nine one four. One eight seven six. Alright, thank you, buddy. We got Jerry back?
What? No, I can sit.
Jerry, hey, how are you?
Good.
We are. Without aid, and.
That's okay. That's okay. Thanks, Bill. Yep. I'll be on the lookout for that, yep. Good, it's good. No, no, I'm good, I'm just, uh, there, I have a, I'm in a meeting, well. There are an executive session right now about a personnel issue I may need to be a hearing officer for, so I stepped out, so. So I just, I don't wanna be too loud. So. Nothing exciting. Yeah. I actually did, actually something interesting, the we're getting a donation of a new canine to the police department. And the place is about five minutes from where you live. Yeah. It's in about southeast dog dogs or southeastern dog dogs. Basically, one exit north of U 175. Yeah. Yeah. Yes, I was like, I looked it up, it was on like maybe ten, literally like a ten minute drive. No, it's a canine, it's, you know, basically, it's trained as a dog, but yeah, it's not, they can retrain it. Right, yes, I didn't make twenty hundred or two hundred dollars worth of countries. Yeah. Yeah. So that's one thing, you know, you know, you guys send down two officers to pick it up, says it. Hey, you, you'll just drop into my luggage base. Yeah. Okay. Okay. No, I, I don't have to drive it down or fly it down or what. Or flying down and driving up, I, I actually if I need to drive the dog. Yeah. Is that, have he called for you? Oh, okay. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. So, yeah, well, they'll, they'll investigate, they'll find out. I think it's probably gonna be cop, well, quite combination Noggin County and their controller may come in. They've been traded around these, yeah. They're gonna, they're gonna speak to our board next week, so. We'll see. Well, you know, I think they, no, I think. Yeah. The laws law. Well, they'll, they'll get triggered at some time. That's all I can really say, is it'll get bigger. And then, they'll come here next week and we'll see. Yeah. No, no, no. This is like a quasi-sater. Yeah. It's got the last seven hours. Even longer. Yes. Yes. Well, that's the kid. Yeah. Must say, you double paid something? Yeah. That's good. That's, that's good. Well, I try to, you know, I try to keep it pretty simple. Yeah. It's the Yeah. 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 Yeah, I think the next thing, next next thing is just the this month on the stats. Also, there's no verbal warning. Yeah. Yeah. Well, I, I have a form that we use, which is basically says, you know, first verbal warning, second verbal warning, written warning. Yeah. 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 So I'm just, can I come this way as we start, so? Okay? Okay, thanks. Bye. You said here, it's been there, come up, what's your turn? Yeah. Did you? Your, yeah, do you have any, yeah, you have any copies yet? What's that, how many, have you been copying recently, or?
Oh, no, I, oh shit, should I?
Well, do you have any, can you, so you're getting it out to Augie?
Yeah.
Pause while you're on that.
Oh, no, no, I sent it on.
Oh, you did?
Yeah. Yeah, no, I sent it to, I sent it to Sally, Augie, and Warren, that you're just, uh.
No, the, the, click and salary, yeah, Warren's up.
Okay. This will be okay, get it all set up on the tablet. Does this actually get the, the PowerPoint, does that hit the screen?
Yeah.
Is it displayed on, on TV?
Yeah, you share the screen.
Okay.
So people watching on Zoom will see it.
Yes.
With the camera, we'll just focus on this.
Okay, good. That's it?
Yeah. Yeah, that's an executive session. At the first level, I am so. Excuse my song, because I may need to be hearing officer that makes the public service, so. I don't want any sort of starting to, you know, commence that the power of, of personnel. Yeah. Oh, fine, yeah. Just wanna try and dial it, see what happens.
Hey, hey. Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
I can't see it else.
Well, it's not a house, it's a apartment, but you don't really tell. You know, it has to be.
Move it to an apartment on the water. Much further than a house.
Uh, yeah, especially if you're part.
Alright, alright, I'm here. I'm saying this real life, that's
Oh, that is, that is.
No, I don't plan on it. In that's very.
On the speakers, the mic. So the TV can pick it up? Right? Clip on or off? No. A lot of weird, you know, I like to have it. Yeah. Yeah. She's a lot of years and rumors.
Yeah.
No. No, of course, we did the camera system and the audio system and lighting. In the in the courtroom. By generated operation. George for channel four.
Yeah, that's, that's what it was. First. Getting those plates. They had the, had the chicken sandwich and everything. That was broke.
Yeah, that's sometimes always gets scared not.
Get that though? Eyelash is that?
Yeah, no.
I can't wear contacts anymore. Don't work.
Stay with me, like, cause I the paper contacts is gonna be is that I can never be in as a group as
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
So they really they can't get anything, try it.
Yeah.
And that was they're supposed to, they're supposed to
It was shocking. That was the opposite.
Yeah.
It was just that were original, yes. It was just they, they were based, you would want. They were more wild.
And as well, it's very few, no, they're quite, it's very
Would do, where they saw. It's fun. They're always getting Now, keep it open, get them out as soon as possible.
So, yeah, the ones I, but they were actually, the ones I got, they're not cause they, they, they sort of so I, I believe the ones I had together, they, they
Their first meeting.
But I have this this condition here, it's like a mucus blow up in the eye. So after this, once the I've actually, we have this yellow
And I looked at
Yeah, but those were
And I'm like
But they
I, sorry.
Not.
They're more toxic.
Oh, it was horrible. I was embarrassed.
Was, was it, were they wanted there or wanted to leave?
I, I couldn't. They weren't.
I did.
I didn't want to get this year.
And the day to day.
They're awesome. They could.
No. But yeah. There's no idea, there's no.
But that was the weirdest sensation was just. Then that's why I tried not to like looking at him. If you want to know, there was scared.
That's the word. I mean, if you need to. One second. No.
Did you?
You also can, uh. No, it was.
They're not. Two hundred and fifty. Uh, my hands. Using. Again.
It is all.
Baby. Yeah.
But you. See, we do have the. And we don't have to make it. Why?
You want to tell, you want to go over a woman?
No, I won't have any.
Okay.
You want?
Sally Howard. Are all, I have a question, are all the things we have here, are those the ones that are in the front there? These, these.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's in our binder too.
Yeah, that's perfect. Yeah, I have my binder.
Good. Cold, that room looked very warm. Was that your scarf that was out there?
It was.
No, but no, I didn't take it either.
They live in interesting times.
Take your fall. Bye.
Bye Danielle. Here's. I wonder, well, let's see. I'll save it. Warrior. Oh. They're screwed. Am I just breaking? I left today in my mother's auto insurance. So a ninety year old woman was driving around. Look at her resume.
I've seen it.
Glad we didn't find out about this the wrong way.
Okay, uh. Who was, let him see you on. Thank you, my friend.
What do you use with it?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
She was marriage.
Dinner, he fills it in, right? I said somebody left.
You left something as a kid.
It was, it was, you know, it was water. I didn't think it was, but I.
It's all right, it's all right. I got tea.
Thank you.
Oh, you are. I'll bring next time I'll bring extra one to you. All right, uh, Augie, what page are we working from here?
Well, who are you taking first engineer or Jerry, who are you taking first, engineering of the, uh, building?
Who's smaller and tougher?
Okay, Carolina goes first.
That's a trick question.
So we're gonna, we're gonna be, we're gonna be talking about the building department's budget first. Augie, what page am I starting on?
Did we give out hand, handout so you don't have?
Oh, boy. Great. So Jerry, you want to introduce this or?
For mayor, so, uh, Carolina, um, has prepared, a, as well as Gino, but Carolina has prepared a PowerPoint. Thanks, Joe. Prepared a PowerPoint slide, uh, presentation for, um, uh, for the board of trustees, uh, that she will go into now, uh, slide by slide, um, and talk about some of the changes in her budget, um, as well as, um, as, as we discussed, uh, last week, that, uh, department heads will discuss revenues, uh, increases in their budget and I'll step in. Because I have two new department heads in front of you, I'll step in when I can. You can start Carolina whenever you want.
It's, yeah.
Good evening, dear, good evening, all the trustees, Augie, Jerry, everybody and members of the building department present here today. Thank you for the opportunity to be here with the budget made in presentation. I believe you have a little bit of my background. I shared my resume with you here and the board. Uh, I've been in the US for over seventeen years, an American citizen, and I have the pleasure not to work with the village of Maranek. My background, I graduated as an architect and urban planner in Brazil and was able to work with the government, uh, service here since early two thousand sixteen with the city of Mount Vernon and village of Maranek. And it was magical when I had interviewed here with the village, uh, that I had the department, was indeed their new leader. And Jerry and Dan Sarnoff were present there and it was very special. So thank you for welcoming me to the village. Um, so now let's move to our budget. Our page number. Shows our expenses for both planning and the line item three of the road plan and beauty department. So those are the main lines we are discussing tonight. You can move to the next page, please, Augie. Believe if you just push into or should do it perfect. So in blue, I decided to highlight to make it easier for all of us tonight what the actual two thousand twenty three budget looks like. So as you can see, under this line items, we don't have any issues. So I have a green check mark there for us. The next page, we do have line item one, six, zero, zero, four, one. And the next one, utilities electric. Don't have much control on that. It starts again, it's in our building, but it did increase a little bit, but it's still under control. As you can see, it's still less than the adjusted budget for two thousand twenty three. That's why it has the green check mark. On the next page, we have living service, which is pretty close to the adjusted two thousand twenty three budget, but it's still under control, even though we went up from the previous year. On the next page, we have the salaries and we've got a few question marks there and maybe Jerry, would you like to expand on that one?
Uh, sure. So, so our assistant building inspector, uh, Jay Contini, uh, he, he makes, um, seventy five thousand a year. The adopted two thousand twenty three budget of seventy six, eight, seventy five was for the individual who he replaced. So, um, that salary line is correct. We checked it earlier today. Um, Karen Johnson, her salary was adjusted, but reflect the office assistant. And then, um, we have code enforcement, part time Frank Cavolaki. Um, the previous part timer was a, a part timer with, uh, very little experience, not as much experience as Frank. Uh, Frank is working with us for eighteen and a half hours a week, year round, and his salary is correct on the right hand side of that slide.
Thank you, Jerry. And these employees that are here today have been working really hard to get us to the revenue numbers that we have, especially, uh, Karen and Rebecca are seeing an amazing amount of increasing things that we are processing through the front desk. Uh, James jumped in to help me with the, as an assistant building inspector. Uh, the amount of things that are reviewed is incredible. And Udrina is directly assisting the planning department with a nonstop dedication. Udrina, thank you all for being here. So our next page, um, we have one line item with a check mark still, which is the staff overtime. As you, you can see, we are still under the adjusted two thousand twenty three budget. However, if there is an increase of forty percent, we're trying to control that with the level of organization that we have to do this past four months did require a lot more work from our staff, including our foil officer, for example, Matthew Gonçar. He had to stay extra hours trying to clean up all of the files that were always based in the department or other, uh, items that needed to be done in a timely manner. The nexus visalene equipment is still under control, although there was an increase and then equipment and capital outlay and the various building department forms. There was an increase as well, but it's still under control. On the next page, we do have the various mailings we have that under control as well. We adopted was two thousand still nine hundred and sixty three and that even including the adoption now that we have of sending, sending out only certified mails to, um, port appearance ticket or other mandatory presence documents. Um, professional publications all under control. That's why you see the check mark in all of those line items, including repairs, maintenance for staff cars. On the next page, we have supplies. There was a deep line on that and I think we can, um, order to our summer intern, Neil, who helped us organize our supply closet, which is a dedicated space now locked in our corridor. We, we know exactly how much we have. So we had to order less supplies.
Carolina, can I say something real quick?
Absolutely.
So for the mayor and board, um, as you can see, different people come to us with different ideas. And, uh, what's great about this presentation right now is not only is the department head showing you the two thousand twenty four requested tentative numbers, but is also looking at our current state of two thousand twenty three, of which we have, you know, um, just a little under two months left. And, um, it just, I want to demonstrate and thank Carolina for keeping an eye on everything, even while we're trying to do what we're doing in the building department and prepare for a new budget and a new budget season. Our department head is still looking at the current costs and to make sure that we come in on budget, um, which is, um, something that I believe I'm going to, um, ask. It's something that we do, the trio does, Dan, uh, Augie and I all the time. But, uh, it seems to be, it seems to be spreading into our department heads, and I just wanted to point that out and tell everyone that I'm very happy that, um, it happened naturally and organically. Carolina, we didn't even, we didn't even, um, tell you to do it this way. So I really appreciate that presentation aspect.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it, Jerry. Um, let's talk now to building department software. That looks like a big number and we went through our year today. As you can see, we are talking about um, a total of forty thousand. It's still under control because that's total and enough to be a few different breakdowns. You may be, Augie and Warren can provide more details in those. On the next page, we move then to planning department, which is our line, uh, eight, zero, two, zero, under the expenses. We have it under control, as you can see, for these salaries. However, there will be an increase as you see on the various tentative stage because we are adding a line item for the director of planning. Also, we have on the second block, directing with your part time. Udrina, that was an addition as well. She became part time influence that I have consulted. And then we have staff overtime, which was another line item with an increase, but due to the needs through different board presences. So that's why we have that increase. Office party, you're gonna see we have, uh, sixty percent increase. We still have it under control. However, we needed to buy more, um, fire cabinets for the planning department for organization of different received huge documents. So that's why you see that increase. And on the next page, there was another increase, which is about thirty percent. Uh, and again, these are items that we had to bring over for a variety of reasons, either for staff. And again, these are items that we had to bring over for a variety of reasons, either for staff accommodation or sit-down stations or different printing systems. And then below, you can see we have all of these different subscriptions. American Planning Association, New York Planning Federation, et cetera. And this is saying zero because again, most of these were connected directly to the director of planning. And since we didn't have one, none of this were actually used. And on the next page, we have supplies for planning and that is under control, even though we didn't finish the this year, we still got money left there. And then consultant is a big number, but there is a drop, as you can see, forty-eight percent drop. So in general, this grand total poses a huge impact, eighty-eight percent. But that's because we were adding a full-time employee with a salary in a line item. So when we move, any questions so far? So please feel free to interrupt me anytime. Alright, so moving through planning and hearing part revenues. Those are the line items that we have in our revenue accounts. In the next page, it now we see some good improvements. And again, the part of that is the big pile that I receive every day from Karen for signatures. My desk, it looks like the Bible, but it's actually items that were processed and they are ready for signature and review first. So under building department miscellaneous fees, if you go to our rectangle that is in pink, you're gonna see in two thousand twenty-one, you collected about seventy-five hundred. In two thousand twenty-two, about four thousand. And then our adjusted two thousand twenty-three got the fifty-five thousand. And to now, which we still have two months to finish the fiscal year, we are at forty-four thousand, which is an increase of a hundred and eighty percent of what we had before. We didn't do anything differently other than going through our fee schedule, understanding what a permit entails, cross-referencing all the traits. It was a lot of understanding, especially for the staff that are processing that. But that made us have this huge improvement of a hundred and eighty percent in our revenue. And then if we keep scrolling down in this list, you're gonna see on, on the next page, we have zoning board fees and planning board fees. That is something that still need to be seen. But Jerry, would you like to expand that?
So, so we know that the process for zoning and planning board fees is slightly different than the other fees that staff looks at, recommends and asks the board of trustees to consider. And so what we did was we somewhat, we left it, of course, flat because we do have some new processes that we want to try to work through with Mr. Spalzino already talking to the board about certain, certain ways that the, the boards function. So, so we left that flat. We're not that far off as far as our targets. We are a little off on zoning board fees. But on planning board fees, we're right on target. Actually, we'll exceed this year. That's the reason why we left that flat. It's not, not, not much as far as we just, we may come, we will come back. Not we may. We will come back to that next year with some new revisions and some new thoughts that we can share with the board.
And then the fees and charges schedule, that's going to be on the boards of January, Monday, the tenth. There are rules to amend, but we're charging fees right now. Instead of the type of application, it's going to also tie to the spread. What is with the application?
Alright. Let's go to the next page, please, Augie. Next page is an exciting page. Next page, we start with the building permits. And you can see back in two thousand twenty-one, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, about that. Two thousand twenty-two, we collected of eight hundred and fifty-one. And now, even though our adjusted two thousand twenty-three budget was sixty-five thousand, to now, we are in nine hundred and fourteen thousand, which is pretty close to the nine hundred and fifty we have requested for two thousand twenty-four. We still got two more months to go. And that was a fifty percent increase from last year's. Then rental inspection fee, you're gonna see all the zeros, but that's because it's a new introduction that we're gonna have at some point. It's the tentative budget for that is one fifty. Jerry, would you like to talk about it now or later?
Oh, so, so we'll, we'll talk about that later, but the rental inspection fees, I've spoken to the board about that. We've added it to the fee schedule for their consideration. It would be seventy-five dollars per inspection. It protects not only the village, but it protects the tenant and well, as well as protects the landlord. It's not an exorbitant fee. It's a, it's a new process that we would need to introduce. And it would be an annual inspection to make sure that properties are livable, habitable and safe.
Perfect. So next one, street permit, street opening permits, that is, even though it's here, I guess it's being done through James Barney, am I correct?
Yeah, it's done by him.
Alright, so that's under TPW. Next, electric permits. And as you can see, electric permits, we have our adjusted two thousand twenty-three was fifty-five thousand. Right now, we are at eighty-one hats already, which is even more than our adopted requested stage for two thousand twenty-four. Eighty-one percent increase. And I believe that it's, thanks to staff is understanding a little bit better what each scope of work entails. And when we have to follow the applicant and say, look, this scope of work, you actually need a licensed electrician. This licensed electrician needs to come over and apply for this project. And then you need to provide us a certification letter that the work was done as for gold. So all of that improvement is actually shown in our numbers. Next, we have sidewalk cafe permits. And that is a new number, just like the rental inspection fee. And under permits order, and we're gonna go through it in a few next pages, we have a fifteen percent increase as well. And again, our budget was ninety-five thousand and we are already at a hundred and twelve thousand. And we have the license, as you can see, the group total here is already giving us a seventy, about seventy percent increase.
Let me, let me give you, let me give you, if I could, Carolina, a little explanation on permit other and the fact that it's requested at one fifty, but I brought it down to one-ten. That was in consultation with this, with the finance staff because we broke out certain, certain permits. So for instance, the twenty thousand from Sidewalk Cafe was in permit other. And so we're looking at this year permit other. And so we feel that one-ten is a very, very conservative number. So that number is actually one hundred and thirty thousand because Sidewalk Cafe was in permit other. Sidewalk Cafe, by the way, does not include the parking spot cafe revenue. That's anticipated to be about fifty thousand or a little bit more than fifty thousand. And that we will discuss when we talk about parking fees and parking revenue. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Jerry. So just to finalize this page, as you can see, we are already about two hundred thousand more than our two thousand twenty-three adjusted budget. And chances are that we're gonna be close to three hundred to four hundred thousand more in revenue. We have an explanation from Laura on what building miscellaneous actually mean. And she said the majority of that is the certificate of completion or certificate of occupancy fees, sanitary sewer fees, tree removal, permit renewal, closing or extensions, and copies of documents. And then under other permits, the majority is plumbing work, which right now we didn't have a line item for that. So it's being added as other permits and also the sign application fees. Thank you, Augie. Am I going too fast?
My pleasure.
Is it going well? Okay. So the next one, fee schedule. That is places where we are anticipating possibly other venues for revenue. And this is under our fee schedule, eight, three, four, seven, in our code of ordinances. Chapter one hundred, for example, is antennas and part of our staff is here today. And they were telling me they never heard about any of that. Am I right? So they never heard that we had to charge specifically for antennas. So one of the first things that we've done is going through the fee schedule said, okay, so when we have Verizon, AT&amp;T, or whoever comes here, let's go through it together and understand how we should charge these specific fees. Next, next one, as a good examples, chapter one twenty for blessing or shipping. And that Gino is right here next to me, has been consulting with me on that. Every now and then we have applicants coming over with all sorts of rock removal. And actually, Dan helped them one as well, right? And they come in with all sorts of technologies and they asking, but is that rock removal? Say yes, it still applies as per our code definition. And I wish Bob was here because he was helping us interpreting all of these definitions and code sections. So our staff would be able to charge and that's how much our law officer is forced per day. It's almost twenty-seven hundred dollars per day. Chapter one eighty-two on the next page, it's about fire prevention. And I was told that up to now, nobody was charging any of this. Am I correct? So our staff was here today, Karen and Rebecca. They directly process receipts, payments. They never collected since they started any of these fees. And those are annual inspections. This is very important. Not for the payment, of course, the payment is part of the revenue, but that is an indication where we're doing something that is proposed and it's essential safety for the union, especially fire prevention, which is chapter one eighty-two. Next page, we have chapter two hundred and twenty-six under housing standards. For every rooming house per unit, we should be charging twenty-five dollars. And it came to my attention that we never charged any of that either. Same goes to chapter two hundred and thirty-four for laundry and dry cleaning. It's a fifty dollars fee per point operated laundry or dry cleaning per machine. Again, it came to my attention that we never charged any of that and that would be part of our code enforcement team.
So mean to inspect those on an annual basis?
That's manual inspection. And, and the plan describes more how those inspections should be done. And this is just the P schedule that gives us the last amendment was, if I'm not mistaken, January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one. That was the latest amendment on the fee schedule. And then we have chapter two forty-six for motels, which I believe we are doing, but I'm unclear on how we are charging. Those because our front desk team who's handling receipts, they didn't inform me, inform me of any of those process. Correct? Right, thank you. And again, for signs, size, there is inconsistency in between what we have in our website as how we charging. There is even a fee of twenty-five dollars per site and I can't find there anywhere the code. And what we have is what is on the fee schedule. And on the next page, under chapter three forty-two for zoning, we do have the third highlighted item says sign variance and appeal applications. So that you would only know they require variance for your site if we do a review. When it goes in front of the border architecture review, they most likely won't know if that sign, if that on it does require variance from our local board of ordinances. And if it does, we would indicate and we should be charging a two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars fee for that variance, which right now we don't charge because there's no review.
And the variance is given by the zoning board, not by the, the AR?
Given by, exactly. Well, it depends on what it says on the book. It might be the border architecture review to grant that variance. I will need to check. I'm not fully person sure. It depends on how the code says.
Thanks.
Sure. And then fence permit application, I believe right now we're not charging that fee, which is specifically hundred and fifty. We're charging it as a building permit application under the estimated market value of that fee. But there is a specific fee for fence. So that's great. It's still under zoning and that's in the room for a specific reason. That's part of what Dan was talking about. If you see, our fee schedule is already saying that it should be for the square footage of a non-residential space. So we should be charging this hundred and fifty dollars and then for commercial industrial says four hundred twenty-five and special permit variance a hundred and twenty-five for the expansion. And again, wireless and telecommunications facilities, we started doing that immediately. I believe Karen and Rebecca already processed that. It's three of those in the past four months. Am I accurate on that assessment? About three, three wireless telecommunications facilities. And we reviewed together, right? Change. So it was a little bit of process and Bob was here, Gino helped me as well. We were trying to understand which ones were co-location modification. And then Dan also helped us. We were trying to understand which ones were on village property and what our leasing, leasing agreements, right? They had all of this piece dictated by them. And then we have the very last page where I say, thank you, everybody, for listening to all of my comments today. But before I finish that, there is the hybrid coastal. I guess we can pass for the next page, please, Augie. What happens is that right now, we have a few rent news boards. And Harper Postal is the only board where we charge zero dollars for all of the work we have, which is receiving permits, reviewing the applications and also be present during the meetings or sending back for review, receiving it back. So our recommendation is to establish some sort of fee for that work that currently right now is being done without any kind of permit fee. And with that, I would like to.
So that would be the application fee?
Yes. No fees at all, we charge.
But does anybody apply to HCCM directly or is it as a result of a, some other kind of building permit?
They apply through a permit. I'm not exactly sure how it is, but I believe it's a building permit. But when they check, our coastal, then that's it, their traffic. There is currently, there is an inconsistent between what we have on our website, what we have printed, and that's part of a big project. Jerry already, already indicated that when we do what we have to do, we have to do for all sorts of permits that we have with adjustments on suggestions of how to follow all of those processes.
I think permit permits go directly to Harper Coastal. I have to check.
What, what does?
Yeah, I think you're right. Perimeter permits.
Yeah.
Yeah. So there are, there are, there are, which do go directly to Harper Coastal. Other applications are the result of, you know, filing the building permit and then going through the, through the application in the Florida.
But even a perimeter permit would be filed with the building department first.
Everything gets filed with the building department first.
Right.
But, you know.
Not necessarily, Dan. I'm sorry to interrupt that. It should be like that. And that goes back to the building department as the gatekeeper of the application. So we have full control. One needs each one of the line news boards. And I know we were backed up. The backlog was huge and I am pleased to announce that we killed the backlog.
Good.
We were able to review everything. Yes. Jerry, I counted the hours. I worked about twenty-three days more than my four months here. So I worked actually five day, five months in four months.
You did five months in four months?
I did.
Hopefully, I only paid you for four months.
Yes, no overtime, no overtime either. But I guess that helped us kill the backlog because there was simply no way. My, my staff was here today. They were asking me every day to go home. Everything would change. They'd say, go home, Carolina. Every day would change. They'd say, go home, Carolina. Same with Rebecca and Karen and Audreyna. They say, gotta go home, we gotta rest. So we gotta help each other here because there's no way we can work in a way where people call every day and say, yeah, you guys have a six months backlog. So I decided to do work without a permit. Believe me, we've heard that a few times. People were just choosing to start the work because they were told they were going to wait six months. But we're not seeing any of that anymore. We caught up.
I, I heard um fee not collected a lot during the presentation here.
Uh, yes.
Yeah, um, how, what's, what, you have a, what's the dollar figure on what we haven't been collecting annually? Do you know? I mean, is there?
Not collected?
Yeah.
Um, unfortunately, I don't have the answer to that. But my staff was bringing to me the information that every now and then they were coming across applications that were building permit applications that were received and then issued without process of receiving the payment for it. And the estimated for that is about ten uh, applications since I started four months ago. And they started tracking and we have the record of two since they start record. For those two that they wrote down, it's about do you remember Rebecca? About six, ten thousand dollars maybe that we didn't collect. It's about ten thousand, not those two.
Ten thousand dollars in a matter of months or?
No, no, on two applications, we had the fees, but we should permits.
Okay.
We found a few items that were not processed, but that is under investigation as well. I believe Jerry, you probably have those items, right?
Hmm.
Okay. And maybe Augie does as well, right, Augie? Yes. Okay, that's great. All right. So there are a few very great things that we can celebrate. I know it was a lot to process. But the backlog is making probably everybody's life easier, less complaints. We are able to handle the anger, a valid anger from people who wanted to do their renovations in a much, much better scenario. And we're calling you seeing less complaints. Less. We're not there yet, but less.
Not none, not none.
Well, because we still see um, a load of emails every day. We can't get back to all of the emails. We can't get back to all the phone calls. Um, an example to that was a case in court, a case in court this past week where the attorney said the building department never replied to my emails. They're neglecting me. You know who I'm talking about? And I asked our village prosecutor if I could address the court because it doesn't mean that I'm neglecting them because they didn't answer an email. I am with the building department seven, uh, five days of the week during the business hours. If they want to go there, I'm there to talk to them or phone call, we can schedule meeting. But they try and say to the judge that I'm neglecting them because I didn't answer to an email. We still receive loads of emails. And we have a lot of paperwork to deal with and lots of meetings that we have to attend with applicants. We go through all of these questions and make sure we're doing the right thing. So there are only so many hours in a day, even when you work five months in four.
And, and the five months in four doesn't even address your ongoing training departments.
That's right.
Um, and you're one of the things that uh, both Carolina and Gino will be working on is becoming sort of like club training managers, which will help with our, you know, our ability to implement our flexible branch of law, also assist with the community ratings system scoring. So that's a lot of ongoing training. And multiply one ability inspector, two assistant building inspectors, code enforcement partner, assistant level inspector. Uh, the, the need to train and the availability to train is stretched in sometimes. So it's, it's a major imperative for the department.
I'm glad you brought that up, Dan. Thank you.
Immunity training.
Immunity training, that's, that too. So the building department is transitioning from the regular immunity. We use, I believe it's number three, the version, we go into version number five. So we will be out of operation for three and a half three hours where the entire staff is gonna go through the training. Um, and by the way, when I'm out in training through Gino, I heard Dan, you're gonna be the acting building inspector.
Thank you.
Yes, am I right, Jerry?
Guess who decided that, Dan?
Uh, I, I'm assuming it is my boss.
Yeah, so I didn't, I didn't tell the staff yet, so now they know for that week. Um, so I'm gonna tell our department now about that. It's coming up. It's in terms that we're gonna be emerging in a big training session, which is gonna be interesting. Our community needs our and all the job that's open, definitely. We'll do our best.
This is for the flood plan, not for the
What else? I can tell you that um everything I know, I'm working really hard to share without them. Uh, when James he's working, I brought him directly to my office. So his desk is now inside my office. He didn't have a lot of experience in the government work for the building department. So everything that I know, I'm trying to share with James. And I told James, I said, James, when you're done with this training, I go and bring something else, bring something else. So two people will be able to train another two, and that makes four of us. And front desk, I is right now Karen and Rebecca who are here. I told them, I remember when I first started, Danny's driven, who's um, out for the past two weeks. He said, what is the policy in your office? Your door is open all the time. You need privacy. I said, my door is always open. You're gonna be interrupted too many times. I said, yeah, but we have too much stuff that needs answers. So Rebecca and Karen, I can, they can tell that it's the truth. As you need, I'm always available, right? Always. So doors always open. I get interrupted probably hundred times a day and I don't mind that at all, right, Audreyna? And Audreyna was complaining about the door sign that I had when I first started. She said it looked really ugly. So first thing she did was she had a sign made with my name building inspector for the door, which was very nice. So Audreyna also told me she enjoys these kinds of meetings. She was in a management position before, right, Audreyna? And she was appreciating the opportunity. We had to share all the issues we were facing during the week and how we were overcoming that or addressing things in the most more cohesive and consistently. Um, wow. I spoke too much today.
No.
Appreciate it.
You, you talked about the reduction in the number of complaints. You have a, a, a a ta- a tally of, of, of the number of complaints that were received and you're receiving now and uh, at a baseline, we could use to compare them going forward?
Well, that's a great question. And one of the goals we have, I mean, it's almost we are mapping the issues that we are finding. That is one of the zoning districts of the issues we are finding. But that is right now, the volume of calls we receive and the volume of emails that I receive, here we go.
Is there, is there a log of them, a number kept anywhere or?
But my estimate would be fifty percent less at a meeting.
Right.
Am I right? That's complaints.
Sure, but it's impossible to tally.
It, it is.
All right.
I, 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 I let's come up to the manager's office. They, maybe two complaints, order which was a self-conflicted issue.
Yep. He's right.
I haven't
Very few come up in the past few months. Very few have come up to our level, Dan.
I think there's, there's been real issues and the self-conflicted issues.
Yeah, yeah, I was just
Tend to be more self-conflicted.
I was just wondering if we could get from anecdotal to, to uh some data on it.
I think I can give an example to illustrate that situation. Few staff members came to me and said, Carolina, why are you doing so much work? Why are you getting too much for yourself? It's what I'm trying to put actually department. Because the lack of planning examination skills that I found through the things that I saw through before I started is huge. So what I'm trying to do is to see, to understand what everyone's capable of doing. And then I either teach you and you sit next to me, I will do it together. Or I'll do it by myself or we send it to a consultant. I believe that is the picture that we're painting when we say we reduce the complaints because things were approved in a very accurate way. Where we are making sure that whatever is out the door was paid attention, was truly inspected, truly reviewed.
And, and primarily the complaints up to this point have been about the, the delay, the speed of the process?
Delay or people foiling because my neighbor is doing something that doesn't belong. Or this is not as per plans. What is happening? They didn't have flood management review, or this is too tall, or this is too close to the property line. Or what was approved? This doesn't match the score. So right now, for example, we are not releasing any building permit until we have a licensed electrician to come over and file for the job or plumber, Wexford County. We also checking randomly for the license numbers to make sure that whoever comes in is a real person. We checking for dates, bond insurance. The other day, a good example, we had a plumber who has been working with the village for twenty five years. He had his son saying, let us please start this work. You've been working with the village for so long. Look what you're asking. Do you didn't have an updated? What was it? Insurance, disability, license, any of that. I said, I looked into their eyes and I said, look what you're asking me. You're asking me to put my job at risk to help you expedite a project and in front of all of my staff members here. So you can't do that, unfortunately. So it's not that I am delaying your work or not being flexible. What I'm trying to do is to ensure, especially including trenching, and we had someone dying in a situation like that, right, Jerry?
Hmm.
So I, I told this applicant, this plumber, I said, you're asking me for something that I can't do and I'm so sorry about it. Because it's not me, it's the way the code reads. And it, it is for the village safety as well. We are additional insurance. Uh, additional insured in all those documents.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, it's Carolina's signature on the certificates of occupancy, the certificates of completeness. And that signature is saying, I reviewed everything. It's compliant with the New York State Building Code. It is a safe place to live, a safe place to habitate, or a safe place to congregate. And that's an awesome responsibility. Uh, that may be among the most awesome responsibilities that any one employer in this village has. You, you have to cross your Ts, dot your Is and sometimes do that voice.
So we, we, we may not be dealing with a complaint number. You may be good, you may get different types of complaints this time next year, right?
Yes. Here, the board and various people, is it okay if I invite uh, Karen to talk a little bit about all of these applications that the change she, she has seen? Is she's processing well?
Oh, wow.
Is it okay?
Okay, with Karen.
I don't want to put you on, what are they going to mean?
You're putting me on the spot, but
I'm sorry.
But it is what it is. Um, there's just so much more organization and everything is clear. There's nothing vague, it's specific. We can communicate clearly to applicants. Um, we are seeing, we can process faster because um, anything in particular you want me to focus on?
We check everything now?
Oh, everything's checked, absolutely.
And Karen is even able to identify what's missing. And if I miss something, I would cross check.
There's so, there are so many elements involved that one person alone can't make sure everything is checked off. So it's different, more multiple sets of eyes. I think it's we, we check what's missing, we fill in what's missing. So nothing gets processed unless it's complete.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Uh, Rebecca, would you like to add something? Karen pretty much summed it up. Um, but okay, that's good, thank you.
So
Would you like to session a lot of the news?
No, I just think as um a former office manager for face university. Um, I understand a lot of staff do that and we're not used to having when you're not used to having weekly staff meetings, a lot of people, there's, there's some pushback about it. You don't think it's necessary. But having been an office manager, I understand that it is absolutely necessary to make sure that everybody is moving in the same direction and all of the um, missing pieces of being linked together, you know, missing pieces. When we sit down and talk together as a staff in one, you know, in one particular time and to have a set time and really stick to that set time. And that's what um Carolina has brought to this table uh, in the months that she's been, been here, in four months, working five months, in four months. Um, that she has been, you know. Um, so that piece alone has made a major, major difference in this working um, atmosphere.
Let me ask you, you, you uh, you dealt with the public before Carolina got there, am I correct?
Yes, actually, I was here. I had been, I had been here. I started here in June of twenty twenty one as a temp from the Randstad temp ages.
Hmm.
And so I was here before Carolina and um you know, so I know some of the people that were here before, before then, since twenty twenty one.
Are, are, are you more confident uh, in the answers you give to the public now, uh, now as opposed to uh, before?
Well, I am, I am, but um, now that doesn't I don't think necessarily means because of Carolina as much as um, cause I'm in the planning department. And so there was a different uh department head, I guess you want to call it, when I first started here. So I have learned so much under Brittany O'Neal, um, who's my direct supervisor. Um, just because Brittany is teaching me more. So yes, I am more confident now than I ever was before.
Thank you.
When I first started.
Thank you.
Thank you.
James, thank you, Audreyna. Would you like to give us an example of how we'll improve with planning examinations or inspection?
Yes, yeah.
Give a little example of inspection, please, or in check or separate.
Well, this is all new to me. Extruding background. Uh, I started in November. What? Here, you're here, Dan. Just, uh, and my company, it looks, it's better?
Yeah.
Yeah, and everything's working right next door. It's very thorough. Everything's to the bug. Yeah. I mean, specifically.
Yes, it's one of the work that when we went for an inspection, it was on the foundation.
Oh, the foundation inspection. So the step, there was a setback issue on the foundation. We went to the site. Took that to a measure. And it was
James.
Thank you, James.
Every time. Thank you, James. Well, what happened is that inspection can be tricky. We had an addition. Imagine if you go to that inspection and the addition is within the setback, there is a lot. That's what we did. So we were trying to, I'm sorry, Jason. So we were trying to verify the setback was within what was approved by the board. So we wouldn't need a variance from the zoning board. So when we got there, it was two and a half feet within a setback. We were able to prevent that during the inspection. But that was one of the things that if James was not under training, he would never know that, correct, James? So he appreciated that opportunity to learn that. So that was number one. That, that drainage That drainage on that street, through the pools, right? So there was nothing, or the form, if you have kind of wood on both sides, we didn't have that. So during that inspection, James had the opportunity to see that sometimes the contractors are stealing from our knowledge as well. And I discussed that with Gino as well. I said, Gino, can you believe we went for. Pudding's inspection and we didn't have wood on both sides of the frame? I said, I can't believe this. Yeah. And then I spoke to Frank about it. Frank said, oh yeah, that's a common thing in the Marinerne. How are they gonna be stable?
We gotta move on to Gino, I'm sorry. And thank you for a very thorough presentation. And uh, thank you for the progress that's been happening to build the book.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
And everyone. Thanks all for coming.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you.
You know, you have slides?
I do, but I'll keep it brief there. I don't have anybody here with me.
Can you borrow someone?
Bye bye. Thank you.
Good to you, the engineering department. And you can go through the numbers as you like, but I wanna give you a brief outline of. What the engineering department does, what I've done since I've been here, and what the plan in the next difficult year. Um, so. A little about myself. I graduated and I can call it nineteen ninety five with a bachelor's in civil engineering. And I pursued a master's uh, in nineteen ninety seven. I worked with Malcolm Burney for eight years near geotechnical investigations in Dan Division. And spent the last eighteen years before coming to the Village of Marinerne. So my first slide, you can see right now, the engineering department is me. Uh, I do have in my budget, uh, an assistant village engineer has been budgeted for nine months out of the fiscal year. And I do have coming aboard this summer, uh, college intern. Who's just completed his second year at Illinois University in civil engineering. So what are the responsibilities of the engineer? Well, maintain the integrity of the sanitary sewer systems and the stormwater domain system. And make improvements and upgrades as warranted. We maintain and upkeep the roadways and bridges throughout the village. We maintain where necessary, improve upon sidewalks and curbs and the village limits. And once special projects come up, and we could talk about that later. We evaluate the project. Oh, I'll evaluate the project, prepare a scope of work. Solicent the services of an engineering consultant if needed. Uh, supervise consultants, prepare plans and specifications for each project, uh, evaluate the bids and. Again, where needed, either perform the construction services in-house or let the consultant take care of it. And finally, any, conduct any special studies uh, on the village infrastructure. Next slide.
My end of the race line.
Sanitary sewer and stormwater command system. So. Complying with the order and consent with the New York State D E C to eliminate sanitary sewer overflows. And as per the agreement with Save the Sound. Arcadis was retained to conduct an inflow and infiltration investigation throughout the village. The sanitary sewer system was evaluated in four metered areas. Basically, what they did was they broke up the section to some more manageable sections. Uh, the West Basin, the meter eight, thirteen areas, eleven and fourteen, and seven, nine and ten. The I I was performed in each of the four areas. And it consisted of smoke testing to identify any illicit discharges in the sanitary sewer system. The CCTV was used to inspect all the buried piping. And finally, individual manholes were inspected to assess the condition. Once the investigations were complete, recommendations for repairs were made. And it consisted of either slip lining, replacements of entire sections of pipe. Which was just completed on Madison. Now it's gonna be on Center Avenue right now. Uh, chimney repairs were were recommended and.
So what repairs?
Uh, manhole chimney repairs. The entire manhole was either uh, could be resealed if there was any leaks or anything to prevent anything from leaking out. Uh, and then I'm working with code enforcement officer to uh, correct any illicit discharges into our sanitary system. Uh, so we're entering the last of the metered areas, the seven, nine and ten. Concurrent with that, as part of the CIMON, the village has developed an annual sewer inspection and repair program. Uh, to include cleaning and inspecting ten percent of the village sanitary sewer system per year. Uh, there's two hundred forty five thousand linear feet of sanitary sewer system in the village. So we are going to be doing twenty five thousand linear feet of inspections. Uh, and manholes uh, along those routes per year. Um, that's gonna consist of, again, cleaning. We're gonna utilize the Town of Marinerne sewer truck that we own concurrently with them to inspect it. Uh, so we're gonna do individual manhole inspections and then. Arcadis is gonna prepare a summary report and we can make any repairs necessary. Uh, this is where the village engineer, the assistant village engineer is gonna come in. My plan is to, within three years, take that work and keep it in-house from Arcadis. Uh, their proposal for just the first year is approximately a hundred thousand dollars. If we can keep that work in-house.
Yeah.
That's a positive. And similarly, the stormwater command system. As you know, Mayor, board, I've brought for you a couple of projects that are approved right now. One is on Florence Street. We have our consultant right now deciding improvements to uh, damage an undersized section. Of drainpipe on Florence Street. Uh, Ralph and Gertrude Avenue, we just had that video from. The culverts at the corner of Ralph and Gertrude, all the way to the Avalon. We found two hundred linear feet of corrugated metal piping. Uh, half blocks with soap and causing backups. So we're gonna be replacing those this summer. Uh, that, by the way, is going to be done concurrently with a sidewalk project, the C D B G project. So instead of having two contractors on site, we'll have one contractor doing both, both jobs.
Sidewalk and.
Sidewalk and sewers.
Well.
Again, it's great. It'll be done in the summertime, school is out. By. The end of August, everything will be buttoned up, new roadway, new sidewalks, new drainage.
And is that Ralph and Gertrude?
That's gonna be from Ralph and Gertrude. This the sidewalk project will extend down to Marinerne Avenue. But the stormwater upgrades is gonna be going from that culvert all the way down to Elliot Avenue.
So is this storm or or sanitary?
That's storm.
Okay, yeah, yeah. They they're doing a sanitary on that block two, right?
Sanitary was complete, Mayor, right at the end of the year. That was the.
But the sidewalk and storm will be working.
And then the last one is uh, Wood and Jefferson. That's gonna be another uh, upgrade to our existing sanitary sewer system.
And that that um, that uh, that sewer blockage there, that that's kind of a flood mitigation measure.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, uh, I think that's gonna be covered under FEMA, right?
You know, the the repair work on Ralph and Gertrude is FEMA project. So we're combining the C D B project and the FEMA work, get done by one contractor.
Combine the bid.
Yeah, agree with that. And we've been working closely with Westchester County to make sure that they have everything they need. Because they're very, very good at specification.
Okay, so roads and bridges. Um, approximately forty five miles of roadway in the Village of, in the Village of Marinerne. The last paving that was performed in the village. Prior to Wallstead Avenue recently was back in two thousand and fifteen, the previous engineer had paved approximately four miles of road. At a cost of around three million dollars. Uh, before that, I think, uh, speaking with uh, D P W General Foreman. Uh, mentioned there was the last project, well, that was around two thousand and fourteen. So really, our roads haven't been paved in nearly nine years, exception of nine, which. Four miles of road, but this summer, my intention is to be back off of the Scardell contract, just like I did with the Wallstead Avenue. And hopefully get five miles of paving done on some of the most deteriorated roads in the village. Uh, leaving approximately thirty nine miles of road still needing to be evaluated. Uh, and that's where I wanna bring in a pavement management study to be performed. Um, some consultants, they can come in and what they'll do is actually ride each. Each road, video it, evaluate it, and uh. Grade each, 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 these are roadway and give it a grade. Based on, you know, how bad it is, that will determine what gets paid first. Based on the condition. And that is a continuous uh, system that'll be upgraded. Once it's done, we can always upgrade it. Those roads will be checked off. Those re- recently paved roads can have a lifespan of between ten to fifteen years. Some can go a little longer. If you live on a small cul-de-sac, it's not how it's much. A Wallstead Avenue, maybe a little less, maybe ten to twelve years. But that pavement management system really gives us a great tool to see. Where we're at right now and where we're going in the future. And it kind of maximizes, it stretches our collar.
I wanna thank you for that because we've been talking about that since I've been on the board, about about having that and then having kind of a. A a payment, like a pavement, paving schedule. So you do X amount every year, so it never gets to the point where we did so much right before the pandemic.
I mean, based on the average, let's say, ten year average renewing uh, uh, even speed then every ten years. Forty five miles, where are you talking, four and a half miles, maybe a little more. Between three and a half to four miles a year is reasonable.
And that's for grinding?
That's gonna be, uh, correct, milling and paving. Uh, bridges, uh, thirteen bridges within the village. Uh, the village performs maintenance on all thirteen bridges. What's that?
The M T A bridges, you said?
The local bridges.
The local. The local.
So the. Uh, daily maintenance is uh, snowplowing, street cleaning, leaf removal, uh, installation of signs, striping. Uh, as you go down now to the more general maintenance, we're talking about puddle repair, repair railings. Uh, that is eight of the thirteen bridges. Sorry, you can't tell, but the second slide over. You could see the Village of Marinerne is in the middle. Okay, so we're performing, and I could send this to you. We have a better looking interpretation. We're gonna be performing that maintenance on eight of the bridges. Uh, and where the really big ticket item is, is the bridge maintenance, the full maintenance, the bottom slide. That is repaving surfaces, replacing surfaces, uh, sidewalks and shoulders. But it's also a responsibility for the superstructure of the bridge. And the actual bridge, the the foundation and the superstructure of the bridge. So you could see, if you can't see, I'll explain it to you. Uh, Jefferson and Hillside are the top two. Go back, Ogie. So on the center column, we're seeing green, Jefferson and Hillside, brand new. Okay, we share those responsibilities with Town, Town of Rye. Uh, Short Street will be new. We have a proposal out with uh, Bridge New York. Grant for Bridge New York.
Yeah, we we've applied for a Bridge New York grant uh, to rehab that structure. Uh, we'll probably look at that based on uh, the. Report that the D E C is doing for, we respond for committee, make some additional suggestions. For various structures that that uh, that remember.
So with the Army Corps doing Ward Avenue Bridge and uh, us doing Tompkins Bridge. Within four years, we'll have five brand new bridges.
I told you, you know, my favorite uh, statistic is right now in the village, there are. Five bridges in various stages of design or construction. Uh, those five bridge replacements are being undertaken by five different agencies. You have the D O T with Post Road, the Town of Marinerne with Waverly Avenue Bridge, the Town of Rye with Otter Creek Bridge. The village with Tompkins and the Army Corps with Ward Avenue. So. Five bridges, five different agencies. Makes all the sense of the word.
Yeah.
All right, next slide, Ogie. Okay, so uh. So sidewalks and curbs, yes. So again, this summer, like I said before, with Ralph and Gertrude. We're gonna be doing phase one of the uh, C D B G project on Ralph and Gertrude from Marinerne Avenue all the way to Elliot. Uh, summer of twenty twenty five will be in phase two and three. Uh, Wallstead Avenue is in, is in the uh, the works right now. It's gonna be a replacement of seventy five hundred linear feet of sidewalk. With new curving bump outs for enhanced pedestrian safety along the entire corridor. Uh, that we received approximately four million dollars uh, in state, uh, in top grants from the state. Uh, so that is looking to be done around two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty five, hopefully.
The 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 state D O T will.
While I'm going through this, please ask any questions if you have any other projects that I have maybe not brought up. I'll be happy to answer. Uh, so with that also, we have uh, Old Post Road in Orianta. That's another major project uh, for sidewalks improvements. Uh, right now, we do have a proposal from our consultant, but we are waiting for him to add the stormwater uh, portion of it. Uh, cause you know, as that area right by the uh, village training condos, there is a a a large amount of flooding. That that occurs in that area under intense storms. Uh, and then again, also another area where we're looking to do additional sidewalk for safety improvements is Rockland Avenue. Special construction projects, so. Start with the transfer station. Um, the older transfer station roof, uh, that would cover the compactor. Uh, was deemed structurally uh, deficient by the previous village engineer. And subsequently was demolished. However, no plan was put back into place to cover the the compactor. Uh, working closely with James, your or General Foreman for D P W. Uh, you mentioned that that's a piece of equipment that really should be kept exposed to the elements. So we retain the services of Keller Sessions as a site engineer. Uh, Grossville Macrae is a structural engineer, uh, studio architecture, and Spennelli Serving. To redesign a new steel Butler building that will serve two purposes. One, to cover the compactor, keep it indoors, and two, uh, to provide additional parking for D P W vehicles. My favorite, the West Basin Seaball. Uh, when I got here, I could see. A low tide, that photo was taken uh, early in October. And it was imminent danger of collapse. Given the proximity of the uh, Coast Guard building and the police meeting unit. Uh, made it all the more imminent that we really protect that structure and replace the wall. Rather than sub out the work, again, my specialty, what I went to school for was geotechnical foundation engineering. I was able to keep the working house. I know that there was a proposal out that a engineering consultant designed the wall. We were able to save that money. And then I conducted the oversight. And working uh, various hours, I had some photos where I was out there at three o'clock in the morning, because we wanted to work with a low tide. Uh, we were able to uh, repair the wall and uh, hundred twenty linear feet of wall was completed in about two months. Came out very well. Uh, and then our dredging project, uh, update on that. Um, Spennelli Surveying right now is out conducting their bathometric surveys within two hundred feet of each bridge and crossing and culvert. Uh, once they're done, concurrently, G E I is doing the paperwork to apply for those nationwide three and general permits from the D E C. So once the survey is done, a couple of days, they'll be able to get their sections and submit it to the state and they promised. You know, Army Corps of Engineers and D E P promised us a quick turnaround. To uh, to get the G P and uh, nationwide grid permit. So we could really concentrate on those larger areas and get a lot of that cleared out.
Are we, are we doing anything right now?
We're clearing some debris that we were able to, anything that fell in, any trees, any uh. Anything that's kind of potentially blocking things. As a matter of fact, we did have a, we attended Dan and I. Pretty big meeting for the Waverly Avenue Bridge. And at that meeting, they were asking us, can we remove some of the trees from my pay? You can actually remove them. You'd be doing us a favor.
Yeah.
Got some more, some more uh, you know, sorry looking trees in that area. Yeah.
Yeah, we won't create any obstacles.
And last slide, Dan. Oh, sorry, uh, okay, apologies.
It's not that good looking.
Any special projects that come into the village? I'm just happy to choose a dam at this point. Um, as you know, G H D provided us with a summary report. Uh, they completed the engineering assessment report, the emergency action plan, and the operations maintenance manual. Which now, once we submit to the D E C, will put us in compliance. However, as he stated in the uh. However, as he stated in the, in the board trustees meeting last week. The dam is certainly structurally stable. No question, it's hydrologically unstable, cannot pass, still we design flight. And he provided us the four options for for consideration. So anything, any special projects, it would have to be the dam, anything that comes through my my office, we can certainly take a look at. Evaluate to see if we can keep it in-house, if not, we select the most competent consultant and send it out. Last slide. A bit of a joke, but one of my favorite ones is a foundation engineer, you can see an engineer in thirteenth century Italy telling the dude. You could save seven hundred lira and save two months of time if you don't do any borings. Yes, they didn't do any borings because. As a geotechnical engineer, this is, you know.
Engineering humor.
Yeah, exactly. So again, looking at my budget, I do have in there nine months for a village engineer. And again, I plan to bring on a summer intern to help me with the paving. And also come for some of the construction oversight, some of the upgrade, drainage upgrade project. We do have a reduction in our general consulting services, we're at a hundred thousand. Engineering services related to Keller Lane were ten thousand. Engineering inspections and survey at twenty-five thousand. And survey and pre-bid engineering, we have a closed tentative budget for twenty thousand.
That's for outside?
That's for outside. Any questions?
No, I'm very happy we have an engineer. Happy you're here, Gino. Think of the community, any community that floods. The regularity of this community needs an engineer.
Happy to be here, Mayor. Good team, I know Carolene spoke about teamwork before. Meanwhile, I worked side by side with her on a couple of small. We usually had some questions, we worked together, but also very happy to be working with James, the D P W general foreman. You know, we have a good relationship. Where, you know, these guys, the part I had mine, but we rely on each other a lot. For things, so for example, on that Ralph and Gertrude project, we did the video inspection underground. We came across some sort of structure that we couldn't figure out where it was. So instead of getting a contractor out there to make a test, which costs us three to five, six, seven thousand dollars. James said, you know, if you could hold off, I'll have my guys do it. So we, you know, we have a good kind of working relationship with that.
Where was it?
We haven't done it yet, we're doing it next week.
Now you got me waiting, waiting with bated breath.
When I super, basically what I did, when we did the underground camera inspection, I sent it to the consultant, but before I sent it to him. I like to send them a drawing of showing the structures and what's there, so what I did was I superimposed. The old nineteen thirty-nine utilities map. And you could see right where that wall structure is, was what used to be the old head wall to that creek that ran down from. The corner of Ralph and Gertrude down Elliot.
So do you think that's what it is?
It's possibly that they could have used that together. And maybe they just cast around it because when the camera focused up. All you saw on there was just deteriorated rebar and concrete. So may they have been that they use that whole type of structure built around it. And, you know, the things that you kind of see when you just, like I said, pictures worth a thousand words.
Cheep and digging it up.
Yeah, so, exactly.
They left that for us.
Well, next week, we'll, I'll have the answer.
And the the silt in that storm sewer over by. By the mason?
Ralph and Gertrude?
Yeah, 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 is that river silt in there or is that?
It's, the majority of it probably is, I guess, is because we couldn't get the camera down those manholes any more than ten feet, it was just spinning, picking up silt. My guess is either that there is damage below those corrugated metal pipes or tight bellied out a little bit. And it just continued to fill with silt. And right now, those pipes are for two hundred linear feet of half block. So water will flow in at three hundred fifty feet. Once it hits that chamber, it just, it just backs up and it just right to the creek and. Any intense storm, or I don't know the magnitude of storm, but any major storm. It's not, it's just limiting the the capacity of that pipe. And it's it's a shame because beyond that section, we have a fifty-four inch pipe going up to New Street. And a sixty-inch pipe going through the Avalon and out to.
So it's it's preventing water from being moved out?
It's preventing anything from being moved out.
I think years, centuries ago, there was a stream that ran pretty out.
Yes, I found an old map that actually. Showed the river extended right to New Street, the map, it probably did go down, it was a small tributary to the Maric River. But the map didn't extend that far. Could see, see if it does.
Yeah.
But yeah, more than likely, those, those little tributaries were. Backfilled in in order for development to go. The road through it, same thing happened on Wooden Jefferson area.
Pre nineteen seventy.
Is that?
Pre nineteen seventy.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no pond, on the corner of where St. Sirocco used to be. When I walked the area with S L R engineering before they were announcing the B response. Flood study kickoff. I took them to the Continental Footbridge, took them to the Culver. And took them up through Short Street and then to the Rynek High School where they had the railroad bridge. All identified on their kickoff meeting as stop lots or water. When I sent them some information, I looked up some old maps and I could send them to you as well, too. I had a map prior to all those subdivisions being cut in. It showed ponds, right where Toyota City used to be, and there was a spillway. So I found another map also. I believe this is where Taylor's thing got his name, it was Taylor Lumber. Might have been, could have been a lumberyard, there was a lumber mill back in eighteen ninety.
That little shopping center. On the corner of. Post Road and. I don't know what the, near C V S killer, yeah, the killer is, was. Before the shopping center was built, there was an old building there, a house that was the mill house. And you could see the vestiges in the basement. So that was, you know, and that building was built in early eighties, but it was that, that was the mill site.
Yeah. The spill and the spillway is east of the spillway. Is still there, there's a piece of, if you walk by the sewer, the sidewalk and look over, you could see a piece of steel just crossing and connecting the two regaining wells. Looks like it was an old spillway in that area, or maybe a section of what was.
It's amazing how much this this area, the whole metropolitan area is landfill and then build it. When I was growing up, the church that we went to was on Twenty First Street and Tenth Avenue, and it was on the west side of Tenth Avenue. And in the basement of the church, there were two big some pumps. And every once in a while, they would fail. And they would call my father because my father was very handy, my father would come down and fix them, and I remember saying to my father, why do they need some pumps there? And my father said, because that's where the river used to stop. The river used to stop on Tenth Avenue. Then everything from Tenth Avenue to Twelfth Avenue in Manhattan is all landfill. If you look at an old map of Manhattan, it's it's a lot thinner, you know, it doesn't extend as far into the harbor. And on the riverside, it's, it's, you know, probably a quarter of a mile.
Yeah.
And Manhattan is all landfill.
That was when you could make new land, can't do that anymore.
God knows what's in there.
I do have, I have to find it, one of my professors, when I was a student, had a map. It's called the building map, I guess it was the, I guess the creator, the name of the building. Oh, it showed Manhattan.
Yeah, I've seen it.
You've seen that before?
Yeah, yeah.
If you go up north, there was a series of islands. Inwood is the only part of Manhattan that's. Not, and that is Manhattan.
Yeah.
It's part of the Bronx, it was filled in by the Army Corps of Engineers, but it was a series of islands up. That area by two twenty fifth by the Broadway Bridge.
Right, right. By Inwood, in Inwood Hill Park is the last wild, last untouched forest in Manhattan.
That's right.
Wow.
Just real soon.
It's pretty cool, actually. Anything else for us, buddy?
That's it.
Good job. That was very good, Gino.
And thank you for being here and fitting in with the crew. It seems like you, you're one of those guys that seems like you've been here forever.
I live here, like I said, I'm a resident and really care about the.
I know you do.
Gino, I'm sorry to me, I do have to talk to you and Augie about your three o'clock espresso habit that we need to talk about, so.
As long as it's espresso.
That's right, that's right, Jerry, I love this guy, he's got his own express espresso machine that he brings in, that's what he said, Augie.
Okay.
Good job, really good job, excellent.
We got some coffee aficionados, I know Cliff grinds his own beans.
Yes.
Makes his own cake cups.
I make my own cake cups, I don't, I don't grind it.
All right, Jerry, you have anything to add?
No, Mayor, everything is. Really good, went really well with our two newest department heads and then we will reconvene very soon next week, I guess.
What is it, Tuesday?
Tuesdays are next one, yeah.
Okie dokie.
Well, yeah.
I'm trying to judge by the sun where exactly you are, it's a, you're you're pretty, you're west, aren't you?
West, yeah, I'm in the, I'm in the WITSEC capital of the world.
What?
It's a witness protection program.
Oh, okay.
I'm in, I'm in Arizona, my cousin's house.
Okay.
You're outside?
I'm outside, yeah, it's, it's, it's not even five o'clock here, it's four, four oh seven right now.
Wow, good for you.
Yeah, thanks, I'll be home soon.
All right, guys.
Thank you very much, we'll see you, we'll see you Monday night for regular meeting and then, and then the rest of the week is all about.
Every night next week. And the budget committee is meeting Friday night.
I need to.
Second.
All favor of June. Thank you.
So there was a great show called.
There is literally a river running through.
The corner?
World after people. Yeah, yeah, and it showed that everybody.